Middle school ELA project to create common units for grade six and seven across the district. So, thank you to both of them. Many, many staff attended a multi-day conference about the phonics program foundations we use. And I'd like to thank everyone who attended that. We were not as thrilled with that conference as we have been in past years. But I do want to thank the staff who took time out of their summer to go to that conference. I was able to visit the aerospace camp in Guilford this summer. Three or four of our students participated. It was great to see right out on the Laconia airfield. I think it was Zach Bryan or someone was flying in there and they were all excited about something. They were, Caroline Abbey went up and was participated in refueling a plane in midair. It was absolutely fantastic. Band camp happened this summer and many of the spots were filled with PES students. By far, the largest group was Plymouth Elementary School. Mr. Stevens and Mr. Gunn from the high school do an excellent job with that. And there was a performance down in the common, I think.
I was there.
Was there. And in the biggest shout out possible, I would like to thank Jenny Lee. Jenny does an amazing job year-round, keeping everything in this building running smoothly. And I really want to say out loud and publicly, thank you because your attention to detail and focus is amazing. So, thank you. Parent PTA news. The PTA had a meeting last Wednesday night that I attended at P's Public Library because this built, this space was not available. Last Wednesday. They are planning for the back-to-school barbecue and want to thank them for that support. And in some facilities updates, I'm going to give a quick update on all of the work that happened this summer. We will give you a tour at the end of the meeting, which I'm very excited to do. But I want to make sure that the public knows some of the things that are going on in the building. The library renovation is near completion. The lights are outstanding at this, are still outstanding. We are waiting for parts that were ordered in the end of January. So, we have some temporary lights that will be up until they, the parts arrive. It is by no means any fault of anyone that was just acquiring the material. There is some damage in some of the glass that will be replaced. So, we're working with the, our contractor, CCI, to make that happen. So, thank you to them for following through on that. The outside drainage project, the primary playground drainage is almost complete. If you've seen it, there's a lot of dirt and we're hoping is we'll not turn into mud out there. The back walkway, the construction to that back walkway is also underway. And the middle school playground spot is also under construction. So, we will be adding a four-person swing set and a permanent gaga pit to the back middle school playgrounds. So that kids can have a little bit more fun outside. Very excited about that. The septic relining happened, the grease trap happened. The interior door space tutoring spaces have been completed and I'm excited to show you those. The propane access downstairs, the barriers are in place to protect that. Our gymnasium floor has been sanded and painting is underway. And I'll, we'll take a peek in there. We can't walk in there, but we can peek in. And I think as you may have noticed when you came into the building, this building is absolutely gleaming, beautifully clean. All of the classrooms and the hallways. Our summer crew, which was short-staffed, we did have a resignation, did an incredible job. And I'd like to thank John Cormia, Matt Schumsky, and Greg Bradley for, and our substitutes. Because we've had substitute custodians in, thank them for their hard work. So, that is my piece of the principal's report. Sorry.
Couple months.
Yeah.
Worth of material, right?
I know.
Okay, I am going to start tonight with the safety piece. So, every summer, we do our annual review of our emergency operations plan. So, I think everybody had received that in an email. And so, myself, the safety committee, both police and fire chiefs, Plymouth reviewed those as well. And updates were extremely minimal this year. It literally came down to a few name changes for new staff members that came on. Thank you, Janina Sandborg is joining our safety committee. And retired faculty members that have moved out of those positions. And then maybe a couple of new roles within the internal emergency response teams. The only new really statement that was added was at the very end of the plan. The emergency action plan for sports-related injuries. And it just simply said, "Grade six through 12, an individual trained in cardio-pulmonary resuscitation supervises organized school sports, sponsored sports activities." We're in really good shape when it comes to that. All of our coaches are certified CPR, AED, as well as myself. So, there's a lot of people that are on hand at our sporting events.
Is there an AED that's carried with each coach?
There's AEDs in the building and when they travel, they take an AED on the bus with them to away games.
Okay.
Yeah.
Super, thank you.
And so essentially, you know, if this, everybody was comfortable with this. Both police and fire chiefs have already signed off on the signature page. And I would just collect our signatures and yours, Amy. And then it is complete and ready to send off to the Department of Ed. It's not due until October 1st, but if we're ready to go, I'd like to ship it off.
Did you guys have any, did you get a chance to review it?
Any questions or?
Yeah, did you have any questions about it? No?
You can go ahead and approve it now, it's on separately on the agenda, but if you're, you can move on.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so we have to make a motion to approve the new emergency plan? Yeah, someone want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Okay, we're going to take a roll call vote, Jen?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Steph?
Yes.
Fran?
Yes.
Any yes for me?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work on that.
Yeah, absolutely. And then first, safety committee right now is scheduled for Wednesday, September 2nd when we return. So, just looking forward to another year of working with that crew and all of our faculty and staff on the safety. Athletics, again, fall sports are on the horizon. Starting next Monday, the 19th, our field hockey, football, and all levels of soccer, five through eight, will be starting. Cross-country will follow them on Wednesday, August 21st. And volleyball will start on the first day of school on August 26th. That is a change, which we updated on the website. And that was just due to some scheduling in the gym and the gym floor work that's being done. So, they'll be the only group that just starts during that first week. Right now, we have a potential 142 athletes across the seven sport teams that are offered. So, that's great. And anyone still interested, all sports information can be found on our website. And that includes the forums, practices, game events. And it's all under the athletics tab, if you go to the homepage of the website. Sports physicals will be offered here at Plymouth Elementary on Thursday, September 26th, from 8:30 to 11:30. Once again, thank you very much to Plymouth Pediatrics for helping us out with that. We already have team photo scheduled for September 9th and 25th. Because of the amount of kids, we split it up and we do the, divide the teams and do a couple of days of photos. And yeah, we should be good to go and looking forward to another fun season, hoping the coaches and the athletes, wishing them all good luck and lots of fun.
Awesome, thank you very much.
And good weather.
Yeah, I know, that's a key. That's a key. Well, thank you very much for those great updates, appreciate that. Privilege of the floor number one, thanks for coming. Nice to see you both. Is there anything you'd like to say?
No?
Anyone online? Well, all right. Check. All right, emergency operations wins, we've already taken care of that. And then student handbook approval.
So, we did make copies, obviously, of the whole handbook. We just have a one-page summary of shifts. But it was all sent to you and it's posted online to the public as well. So, I'll have Tanya just kind of review the major shifts in, in the handbook for this year.
So, there were minor edits throughout the entire document for clarity and grammar that I do not feel like we need to go through at this point. I will let you know that Jen took the time to read the whole document for clarity and grammar, so I would like to thank her. So, nothing of substance in those was word choice and periods and things like that, okay? The more significant changes are listed before. So, on page eight of the document, under the title medication, there is a change for clarity, which is that all medication must be delivered by a parent or guardian. So, we felt like the wording in that section was not as clear as it needs to be. I'm going to give this copy of this document to Kelly so that she could read, if anyone has any specific questions about these. She can read what it says specifically. Page 10, under PES schedule, we again made a change there for clarity. We wanted it to be clear to parents that grades four through eight rotate classrooms. They don't have a self-contained homeroom in grades four and five anymore. They, they rotate from teacher to teacher on that. And that's, we wanted to make sure that's stated in our handbook.
Is that new?
Yes. We actually started that last year and realized we had not updated the handbook to show that. Not that there were no concerns, I just want the document to reflect what we actually do.
Yeah, makes sense.
On page 11, under recess, there's an explanation. In grades kindergarten through second grade, there are two recesses, two recesses. In grades three through five, there are two recesses. The second recess is earned by meeting behavior and academic expectations. And in grades six through eight, there is only one recess. So, we felt like it was important to just say that in writing. Page 12, under the topic of telephones. We were having a conversation before the meeting, casually before the meeting started, about cell phones. The document states, or what we're, what we would like to edit the document to stay, to say is, "At no time during the school day are cell phones, smartwatches, or earbuds permitted. They are to be stored in a backpack or locked and turned off. Please refer to the responsible technology use handbook for student cellphone policy." The reason I wanted to bring this up at this level is that there are some parents who feel differently about this. And I want to make sure that we have an open dialogue about that. There are some parents who say that there are now a device called a Gizmo and some other parent, or watching, watch devices that can be set with very strict parent controls. And that they feel that it is a safety need, that they have access to their child if there was an emergency. And I think that it's important that we as a community have this conversation again. I do want to let you know that the teachers have come out with a statement that says that at no point, that the teachers in unity believe that there should not be wearable technology, including smartwatches. And because this meeting, I think, is off-cycle and not well-publicized, you know, it's before the school year starts. It's sort of a, I think we may want to revisit this in September and let parents know that we are going to have a conversation about it. If we were to change to a different policy than what is, what we have had, I went ahead and did draft what I would put in place in that circumstances. Circumstance, it says it right here, draft. "Smartwatches are only allowed with parent controls, putting the device in locked or off mode after a parent requests such allowance in writing. Such request must outline how the device will be locked between 8:25 and 2:55. Requests may be approved by the principal after review." So, I felt that if, you know, if we were going to move forward, how would we move forward in a way that I could support? And that, this is the way that I could support it. So, I wanted to propose that to you now to take into review and consideration for the, before our September board meeting in a few weeks.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I just, so I did notice that just above that, where you have the line out, just, it says that they, they're supposed to have, it's set to silent in their backpack or locker, which, sorry. The words kind of link together. So, they're supposed to have it off at all times? Is that accurate?
Correct. And I will say, I would say for 95% of the time, we have no issues. It is. But 5% of the time, it is an issue. And I think that what we know is that the pressure to be connected to technology, the pressure that is felt by youth and adults, this is not just youth, is really great. And that it, I believe that the technology companies have really preyed on our youth and have created an addictive design to wrap kids into this. And that it's really healthy to allow some time, and just not allow, but structure time where you are away from technology. I think, yes, we then give them a Chromebook, you know, you can say, well, they're actually not away from the Chromebook. But that the social media aspect and the, that comes through a phone or a smartwatch is different. So.
And there was an FDA that you included.
The surgeon general.
The surgeon general about the negative effects of it, that you included in every newsletter that went out, I think, last year.
Yes. Yes.
And I think it, to be clear.
Yeah.
Because communities are very split on this topic. So, it's, it's, I don't want to bring it back to masks in, in schools, but it's one of those kind of lightning bolt topics right now as far as,
Absolutely.
nationally, some people are, some districts or governors are banning phones. So, I think you have to, you know, our, all of our communities are pretty unique. So, to listen, if there is feedback, to listen to it and make a decision that's in the best interest of kids. And if it's disrupting student learning, then absolutely, we should shift, I always say, a little bit at a time. And then if we have to adjust, we can adjust. And that all of your policies are not the same on this. So, it's always something to know it's not like an FAU-wide policy. It's very specific to your community. So, it is, social media is what's, the data is behind that social media piece. And accessing social media too early and having negative mental health side effects is clear with, with that, with the social media piece. So, I think it's important to delineate between cellphone use, it's one thing. And then the social media access and disruption, the need to go to the bathroom a ton of times to check TikTok. The need to, you know, you just can't sit in a class for 45 minutes because you're constantly worried about checking your phone and streaking, doing, doing whatever you need to do as far as.
Or the backpack, it's ringing.
Yeah.
Yes.
But, but it went, so it's just a couple, it's just something to be aware of. And, you know, I think Tanya's on the right track, teacher's around the right track, but not everyone is in, you know, community, parents are not all going to be in unison on this. But you will have several that, you know, that's kind of the research, it's like get everybody on your board, can you do this together? I'm sure you've seen parental contracts as far as, you know, let's do this as a community. Get there, but it's just, it's, it's one of those pieces that you may see votes on either side of the fence as far as their belief in it.
And I know that this is something that was brought up last year and we approved a policy. And I thought that with the policy that we approved, because if a child needed it for medical purposes or, you know, if you would say, oh, yes or no. So, I, we'll see what kind of feedback we get come September, for sure. But I like your written draft, because it makes a lot of sense. Because it holds a parent accountable and it holds the, you know what I mean, the child responsible. So, I like the wording. If it were to come to that, I like what you put in the draft.
So, no decisions need to be made now, but it's just something to think about in a month. When school's edited, the procedure is implemented. That's when, that's when you typically get feedback.
Are you wanting us, don't, we want this to be approved before school starts, though? And then we can make an amendment?
It can be edited after.
Edit to it?
Handbooks are edited, but just you're annually have to approve it and then they're edited as soon as they're getting passed.
Okay. All right.
I have a couple of questions, if I could. What is the policy at the high school regarding cell phones and wearable technology?
So, well, wearable, they don't delineate wearable technology, so that's, that's one piece. So, cell phones are generally not allowed, and I don't have all the specific wording, I can't remember it. But they're allowed right now to have them on their person and not used during class.
Okay.
More study halls. It can be on them right now. But all schools are looking at procedures right now that may change, shift soon. As soon as this year and maybe not. So, that, so generally, it is a disruption. I think you can see here, teachers say it is a disruption.
Oh, I know that.
With kids going, it's more or less, like I said, sitting for the duration of an academic period. You feel a buzz, you want to go check what it is and then come back. So, it's constantly important, you're not focused on what's happening. So, I think you'd say they're internally, kids are internally distracted.
Absolutely.
By the constant notifications, I'm sure. But as far as like the policy there, it's not during, you're not supposed to use it during class or during study hall. Then they can use them, I think they can use them at lunch and at, in the hallways if they need to, in the lobbies.
And my other question has to do with the part that says earbuds, smartwatches or earbuds? Earbuds are not permitted at any time during the day. I know in some cases, earbuds. You're smirking, you're smirking. I was called out on this last year. I'm, I'm, earbuds would be allowed if it was in a written legal document. I, maybe I need to give myself a little bit of grace and say when, when the administrator gives.
Don't they use them in class, though, sometimes?
Yeah, I think, like, if they're listening, sometimes for, if they're reading and listening to a book and reading it on screen.
But the Chromebooks aren't Bluetooth capable.
Is that the difference between earbuds and headphones? Is that the difference?
Oh, earbuds versus headphones, is that the difference?
We supply headphones.
Okay.
To the students, we have those for, if you are on your phonebook and need to plug in and listen.
Right, but some people get creeped out, and I think understandably, about the hygiene of that.
Yeah.
And they want to bring their own earbuds. So, I could add the words, except by teacher approval. I think that would be reasonable. I think there, there are situations where.
It's a structural strategy, for sure. I think that the intent behind this is the, to get away from a kid walking around with their one earbud all day.
Absolutely.
Because they do that.
Yeah, right.
Right, I think it needs to be said.
I have to put it in my syllabus.
Yep, I, we will add that, thank you.
Can I ask one question, Tanya?
Yes.
Just with a policy change like this, do you have any plans to maybe hold a listening session or introduce this policy, this draft policy to parents ahead of time?
I think I will, I will.
You can consider that.
I will consider that, I think that's a really good idea. So, it will be a quick turnaround between now and when our board meeting is, but I will.
Just proof of thought.
Yep. Roundtable.
I think it'd be nice to hear around this policy, some parent feedback as a board member.
Yep.
So, to have, have a little bit of a sense of parents.
Yep, and I will, I can invite them to send an email as well, or to attend this meeting.
And this, this draft policy in the draft handbook is available to the public currently. So, I agree, we should call it out specifically, but it also is available out there now.
This section where it says draft, where it's inset, is not in the, is not in the draft document. That is here tonight.
Yep.
Just to make.
It will be updated.
It will be updated, but.
And where, where would that be posted, though? Do you know any, like, where would people get access to that?
Right on the website.
To the handbook?
Right on the website, the draft.
Yep.
I just don't know that everybody does, that's all.
No, I don't think so. I think sending out a specific email invitation is the way to reach parents about it.
And we might get less, it'd be good to get some feedback from parents, we might get less resistance with a policy change later.
Yep, and it also gives teachers an opportunity to come and express their concerns at the same time. So, I think both, both, all of that is important. So. As well as potentially students. Yes. I think I'll have a meeting, though, separate from the board meeting, so that I can summarize those conversations to the best of my ability.
I think that'd be great.
And the public is always welcome to come to the school board meetings.
Of course.
Yep. On page 13, under cafeteria, we wanted to make it very clear that all students are able to purchase food from the cafeteria. Even if there's not money on the account, they can purchase food up until a certain level. Some parents of younger kids were unaware of that and then caught off guard by some bills. So, I wanted to make sure it was put in the student handbook that that is something that kids can do. On page 15, under the title, "Emergency Procedures," we are making a change for clarity. We added the language for clear hallways for medical emergencies or for instances that do not require a lockdown due to, you know, broader safety concerns. So, we wanted to make sure that that sort of softer language of clear hallways was included.
I did have a question about that. That's in our emergency protocol, that same line, I would imagine, the lockdown procedure.
In the, yeah.
Okay. My concern is if there's a huge emergency and, and it specifically states that over the loudspeaker, it would state lockdown.
Yeah.
That, is that, it just makes me a little nervous if there was something terrible happening in the school and then you're shouting out over the loudspeaker that there's a lockdown. It just, I don't know if there's a different way that you can communicate it versus using the loudspeaker, is all, is what my thought process was.
So, in a, in what you call the bigger situation.
Yeah, yeah.
There are panic buttons located, you know, within the front office, nurse's office. And, and so, those get, if those get pulled.
Yeah.
That's the process.
Yeah.
It is an automated verbal response. "Please proceed to secure lockdown procedures." Or, "Secure classroom procedures."
Okay.
Please, yeah, "Please proceed to secure classrooms procedures." And, and it, and it keeps repeating that.
Okay.
And so, when we do our drills.
Yeah.
That's what our students hear.
Okay.
And so, they, they know. When they, when they hear that, they know. If it's something like a, a soft lockdown or a clear hallways, that is usually, like, we actually had one this year that we needed to do for, and, and I got on the intercom and very calmly said, "This is not a real emergency, but we're going to ask everybody to clear hallways, go into a soft lockdown, remain in their classrooms until." And so, every, everybody did that and was great.
Okay.
And feedback from the teachers and the kid, you know, was fine. They just proceed with their regular classrooms. The only thing is if they were going to change to another class, they just had to hold in place.
So, that language was changed because it had a soft lockdown, still like the lockdown language. So, it wasn't really appropriate for the, there is no like soft lockdown. So, the recommendation was just clear always. So, you could shift that.
Yeah.
And so, now we're not going to use soft lockdown, it's going to be clear hallways. Because it's not, it just really means to stay where you are.
To stay where you are.
Right, right.
You know, we got to clear something up in the hallway, you know, couldn't be anything.
Yeah.
You know, not necessarily true lockdown.
Am I correct that your comment is regarding not creating undue fear for?
Correct. And I'm thinking, the worst-case scenario, you have an active shooter in the building, not that that never happens, God forbid. If you're shouting lockdown over the intercom, isn't that, and I don't know what the science behind it is, because I'm not a police officer. Is that creating more of a panic for that person that is in here? Making it like them react?
Creating more of a panic.
A trigger from all of the assailant?
If there was someone that was bad in the building.
Yeah.
I don't know about that.
So, you know what I mean, I don't, that, that was the only thing is like if you're, that's where my mind went when I hear. And then I'm like, oh, well, if that, someone is, they're either going to vacate, because they're, know someone, they're coming, or they're going to just continue faster. So, I just wasn't sure if there was different, and I don't know what this.
Well, unfortunately, those are the things we can't predict, right?
Right, correct, and it's all.
We get all the recommendations from the officers and they say they're calling. Uh, we get all the recommendations from the officers and the security.
Right, I mean, and if, and if, if Chief Hutchinson looked at it and.
Which for them, it's notify as many people as you can and as quickly as you can.
Correct, I mean.
I mean, both Tanya and I have these orange buttons on on radio.
Yeah.
We hit that, that automatically goes to the cavalry.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, the panic buttons, or, they know too, when we're doing, doing a drill, I get on before one of those is pulled.
Mm-hmm.
And say, this is a drill, this is only a drill.
Yeah, okay.
And then we pull that panic button and the drill begins.
Yeah, cause we can't predict, we can't.
Correct.
Can't blame for what it is.
If it's a real emergency.
Yeah.
They know, we have technology now that, that notifies multiple agencies.
Yeah. Okay.
So, even if we said, oh, that's an accident, somebody for, for, pulled the alarm, they still, they don't care.
They come up, they come up, yeah, they, they will radio us, um, you know.
Right, 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 right.
They come up, yeah.
Yeah.
And two, you know, if a teacher or faculty staff member sees something somewhere else in the building where one of those panic buttons is not located. You know, they are informed to get on a radio, get on, they can all do PA from their classroom.
Yeah.
And say lockdown, 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 so when everybody hears that, they know it's not a drill.
Yeah.
And so, we're gonna go right into what we practice as best we can.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, it's, it's hard.
Okay, right. I do think that that is something that the teachers could hear a little bit more about their.
Correct.
Role in.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, on page sixteen and seventeen, uh, discipline referral system and middle school plan for disruptive behavior, that is an update in yellow, there's quite a bit of change between page sixteen and seventeen. We used that procedure last year where we actually gave the middle schoolers a little bit of time to de-escalate and then talk to them, um, sometimes the next day to process the events, um, and it was very successful, so we wanted to make sure that the document reflected that change. Thank you to Brian Sheehan, who actually developed that, that plan for middle school and has been working to do the plan and process with, with the kids after the fact. Then on page twenty-three, a continuation of the academic honesty and plagiarism section, an addition, we are going to add creating work via artificial intelligence, AI, as a constituting cheating and plagiarism.
In, this was in the original draft too, but there should be an E at the end of intel, I'm sure that was found in, in the review that you ordered.
Yes, right there.
I figured.
Yep.
I didn't misplace that E, there it is.
It's there, sorry. Uh, on page twenty-four, under the title, student-led conferences, we're deleting that section, we no longer have students lead the parent-teacher conferences. They attend when necessary, but do not lead the discussion, um, and it's, I, you know, just wanna have it be accurate. On page twenty-five, under, uh, a continuation of the assessment selection, we are deleting NEWA and PSATs. We are no longer going to be, uh, conducting NEWA tests or PSAT, reasoning is that we have sufficient testing and assessments already, and we don't, um, but the balance, we're, we're seeking balance in that we not take that many days for assessment, so we're, we're not gonna be doing those assessments any longer.
That is SA, SAU-wide, we have shifted to less is more, we have valid data based on the AIMS Web data.
And the SASS.
Plus the kids take the state assessments and they take curriculum-based assessments all the time, that will be looked at, and that's not.
So, we as an SAU have discretion on which assessments we participate in and which ones we don't?
Just the district assessment is the only one that we, um, have discretion, and obviously the curriculum. But all the principals do work together to provide similar experiences going through the high schools, since they're all filtering in there. State assessment, we have no, no SASS.
SASS assessment is required.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's required. So, the district assessment, which is the AIMS Web, and then the curriculum assessment, we can do, PSAT is not required.
We'll be doing the AIMS Web though.
Yes, in place of the NEWA.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
I'm really excited about that change because it's much more balanced, so, just to say aloud. Under, uh, on page twenty-five, under the title, report cards, assessment reports and honor roll, there's a change there, please see the highlights. We, during COVID, had switched to progress reports instead of assessment letters, um, three times a year, but we are returning back to assessment letters as they are a benchmark of standardization and normed expectations, so rather than getting another curriculum-based assessment, um, we're gonna go back to those three times a year assessment letters, is the child progressing through the, through a normed achievement, um, standard.
And Tanya, and those are based on?
AIMS Web, they used to be NEWA.
Okay.
Probably what you remember.
Yeah.
And, um, when their kids were little, it was Fontis and Penel level.
Oh, yeah.
M, N, O, P, A, B, C levels, right, they're the level, um, not to get too down, too far down a rabbit hole, but for a variety of reasons, we switched to AIMS Web, so they will, the assessment letters will be based on the assessment report, actually, from AIMS Web. Parents will get the actual report from AIMS Web.
Do we have, um, parent-teacher conferences scheduled.
At timely, yes.
Within some of those timeframes so that it can be discussed with the parents?
Yes, thank you, Jenny Lee, yes.
Alright, super.
We counted out the digits.
Cause I would hate to get a, a thing and not be able to talk about it for three months, you know what I mean?
Yes, yes. And, and parents, teachers are always willing to talk, um, you know, via email or phone as well, so I read, I encourage, um, parents to reach out if they have concerns, you know, whether or not it's the time for the parent-teacher conference, set up or request a meeting, and, you know, teachers will, will follow up with that.
Okay.
Does that mean, um, just point of clarity, does that mean the AIMS Web, the AIMS Web will be administered three times a year?
Okay, yes. Which it has been K to six. Um, and now it will be KH. Lastly, on the backside of the document in front of you, um, the, probably the biggest change to the document is this middle school academic and behavior standards for co-curricular participation. So, in the actual document, you'll, there's almost two pages of text changing, um, this participation. And in summary, I would like you to know that Mrs. Carey and myself worked with the middle school teachers to strengthen the connection between academic, um, expectations and behavioral expectations being met before participating in extracurriculars. Um, the plan as outlined is designed to provide really clear expectations for kiddos and parents, and also some support and communication around what's going on here at school, so that we can reboot and, and take care of issues. Basically, the, the, um, change says that if you have a fifty-nine or below in any class, you are taking a week off from co-curricular participation, uh, to, in order to work to bring that grade up to a passing grade. And if it continues to not be passing after your first week, you have a second week to bring it up. Regardless of when it comes up, you're off for a week, okay, you can't just, you know, pass all your work and get, you know, that you really need to focus on academics. Um, and then if there is, for a third, if you are still not passing after three weeks, you are removed from the co-curricular activity. In addition, there is a behavioral expectation that if you are sent to the office two times in a week, that you take a week off from co-curricular participation. And that, that if you are sent to the office during your week of probation, you take another week off. This is a very, this is not for, this is a very small group of people that this procedure is designed for. But it's really to say that to participate in our sports and our extracurricular, you represent yourself, this building, your parents and our community. And in order to do that, you really need to be meeting the expectations within the building.
How's that enforced?
We, uh, set dates, the first Friday of each month.
I know, is it on page twenty-six, cause it's not on the draft that Michelle sent us.
It's right here. Page thirty-two.
Okay.
Page thirty-two and thirty-three.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, the first Friday of every month, and, and all the dates are listed, so the first one is September sixth.
And who looks at that?
Very serious, my mother to be up for the entire season, and that's the rule of my house, it's debris is opening during those sports periods.
So, we are, we are trying to work with kiddos, but we're also setting an expectation that, that, both that you, um, do the best you can and that you, um.
Self-regulate.
And you self-regulate in the building.
Yep.
Um, I will let you know that our middle school teachers, if a student is getting work, attempting work, handing something in.
Yeah.
Our teachers go above and beyond to make sure that kiddos who are, uh, putting in honest effort pass classes. So, this is, okay, this is very reasonable.
I would also say that the teachers are very aware of those people who are right on the cusp.
Yes, so, yeah. I do think that we have a little bit of work to do communicating with parents around failing grades, so we're looking at Power School and how we can make sure that the alerts go out if a student is failing. Um, I did get some feedback around that at the end of the year last year, that, um, parents were surprised by some grades and wished that they had, um, had prior notice, so that they could have done something about it.
I, I'm surprised by that, cause I do get a notification, every great ton of grade gets submitted, it's kind of annoying.
So, that's only, that only works if you're actually signed up for it though.
Yeah.
Right, so, some, some parents, some parents for anxiety's sake.
Yep.
Including myself, when my kids were coming through here, have turned, turned notifications off.
Right.
Because it was creating, um, a fair amount of anxiety for my family, so.
And that, there is data behind that, that notification of grades. Um, especially, you know, it, it, sometimes a kid's out, the zero is put as a placeholder, knowing that it'll change, but all of a sudden it's like, what? You know, why are they getting, they weren't here, it's just a placeholder, you know, just, that instant feedback is sometimes.
It's also kind of nice to give, um, kids a little bit of grace.
Correct.
I, I think that that's important too. Their parents aren't always aware of every little thing in their lives, so.
So, but that is the, what I consider to be any, uh, significant change, really, the rest of it is extremely minor.
Can I ask a question about the handbook in general? So, something that I noticed when I was going through the handbook very carefully, um, I noticed that we have bus service available for students who live further than two miles away. And two miles seems really far to me, if you have some kids walking to school and they're walking for two miles. How, um, have we discussed that at all?
Not in recent years, um, I have had a couple of parents reach out with concerns about that, um, saying that for families with very young children, that that's really a burden to them. So, I think it would be something that we would need to take under consideration with the bus company and what the impact of any change would be to the bus company, would be my suggestion.
It's in a contract though.
And on a, in a case-by-case basis, I would say.
Yeah, I think that that's just something we should look at, um, especially during the winter months, when it's either very cold or hard to get there.
You have to be careful with it too, because you're under contract with stipulations.
Sure.
You know, as far as that goes, and multiple stops within two miles can actually make it more, you know, tough to, it's, so all the implications are tough. Sometimes we try to do some common stops.
That's what I would think, some common.
I would expect common stops as well, I mean, you're not gonna stop at every house, especially.
They do that in rural, more rural towns in Plymouth, right, like I think, out in Romney, they do it at the end of this like long road, right?
Yes.
Well, a high, a high school is more consolidated bus stops, because busing is not required for the high school level, busing is required for elementary schools, so.
Oh, that's interesting.
That is, yeah, busing is not required, so some of your more rural towns like a Wentworth and Romney has consolidated stops to the main roads. So, they're, they could be traveling more than two to three miles to get to the bus stop.
Wow.
Uh, but it's not required, so it's just interest, it's just one of those pieces, you know, absolutely can have the discussion, but I, I don't know how often it comes up that.
I certainly would, would hate for it to be the case where a child is walking to school, it's snowy and they get hit by a car. Um, or they just can't continue because it's two miles, um, which to me is a long way to walk.
Absolutely.
Do you ever hear that from parents, that it's, um, overly burdensome?
In a, in a couple of cases, a year, yes.
And do we accommodate those, ever?
I suggest spots and try to work with families, but I do not usually, I do not accommodate them, because when I do, then am I gonna accommodate for everybody? So, I think it's important that there be a conversation about it, but I also think, um, you know, you have to be consistent.
And I think the time to bring it up would be when we review the busing contract for the next year, so we can take a look at what this, you know, maybe we tweak it there.
Right.
When the, cause as of right now, for this year, we have a contract signed with the bus company.
It's a multi-year, it's a five-year contract.
It's a five-year contract.
Oh, when does, when is it up?
I think we just did it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, suck it up and walk kids.
Yeah.
I mean, it is, I mean, I, I have to be honest, if it becomes an issue that we, that we can work with, that's fine, but it's, I think it's something that we do let families know, if you're moving within two miles of the school, your carpool or, or get, you know.
I'm sure most people can make arrangements, I'm sure they can.
But sometimes.
I was surprised by it.
Yeah.
Um, I thought it was probably one mile.
Me too.
So, I was surprised by it, something to think about.
Yeah, for sure.
Yes, I think for the future.
Absolutely, thank you, Frank, go ahead, sorry, Tanya, did you have to add something else?
I would ask that you approve the parent-student handbook as described tonight and as it was provided to you, so that we can get it out to families tomorrow.
But not with the draft, if a smartwatch is piece in it.
Correct, without that.
Now, it's gonna be as proposed.
As proposed.
The draft wouldn't, the, the proposed language wouldn't come unless we get feed, feedback, that's a future consideration. So, that wouldn't be part of the approval tonight.
So, do you need that moved?
Yeah.
And if we approve this, then with this phone wearables conversation, the policy can be amended if that's how we also decide.
If it's, yeah, you only need school a couple of weeks, four day weeks, so, see.
And we can always amend this student handbook at any time throughout the year, it's not like a one and done, um, we've amended it before for different instances that have come up, so, it's not a, you know, this is it and that's it, it, it's an amendable policy, so, someone.
But it's nice to have a fresh.
Yeah.
It's just required by law every year, you approve it at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
Nice to have fresh starts.
Someone wanna make the motion to approve it as we're in?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, Jen?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Steph?
Yes.
Fran?
Yes.
And yes for me.
Yes.
Got it, thanks for me.
Thank you for the chit chat.
Yeah, I know, the Cliff Notes are helpful.
Yeah, that was.
Appreciate that, alright, is there any other business?
Uh, the only piece I wanna bring up for next month.
Mm-hmm.
There's significant amount of legislative changes, I'm just gonna bring some to you tonight, cause I typically do that. But the governor continues to sign off on laws fairly late in the game, um, some having some significant impact right away. So, I wanna wait till all the clarity around some of these laws are out, about, there are about a myriad of things, so, um, I will bring what's essential for you to know, uh, but I'd like to do that next month.
That's fantastic, thank you, Kyla, because I know that.
Sometimes you guys get questions.
Yes, and that happens, that happens in my other hat too, so, I totally understand. Um, a privilege of the floor, number two, yes, Geneva?
Um, I just wanted to say about the technology changes that I believe, um, through my experience teaching KDA, my biggest conversation with them is about trust, not necessarily what they're using, when they're using it, why they're using it. But I hope that doesn't get lost in the conversations with families and, um, teachers and the whole community, because it's not really about the smartwatch. It's about me having to be paranoid that you're on it when I'm trying to do my job and teach you, or, you know, or it could even extend to where in a household, you know. You shouldn't be worried about, you know, what you're doing, you're calling upstairs and you're right, right? So, that conversation around trust and being open, it's like. Um, so that conversation around trust and being open, it's like, I think that, um, with the middle schoolers, they were, um. That conversation came up because of Go Guardian, um, and I said, yeah, I mean, a lot of this was driven by trust. And lack of trust during class time when you weren't actually learning, so, um, I just think whatever we talk about with the technology, trust has to be at the center of that conversation. Because we can argue up and down about what watches are best, or what phones are being used, or the earbud conversation. But it, it's very hard to argue, you know what, I just can't trust that you're gonna do what you need to be doing, and that is the problem.
That is.
You know, so I just wanted to say that before those conversations continue in September.
Thank you. Yes?
Uh, same topic, there are two things, I, I wanna just read, read what she said, because I had a colleague recently who has older children that mentioned, the more we control. What they're looking at, the more taboo it becomes, and the more they're hiding information or maybe choosing poorly. So instilling that level of trust in our, our kids to use it properly is one thing, but what concerns me as a parent in this school is the, the data behind the decline in attention span. Where kids cannot sit through a period of class, they cannot focus, their, their grades are declining, they can't read a book anymore. Like, it's really basic stuff they should be able to do, um, so I'm torn, but my understanding, I work rising fifth grader, rising ninth grader. Um, the grade of phones here, and I'm hearing from the community that there's a petition happening at the high school level. To get the high school to not allow the kids to have phones in the school building. I don't know if there's any truth to that, have you guys heard that?
I have not received any.
Because they are allowed to use them at lunches and hallways and so forth, um, it's becoming a problem in, in the, in the school. And also with bullying and that kind of stuff, so you just can't, I can't imagine you can control that, but I wondered if anybody had heard that. And if there's a way of picking back sort of those people who have created petition and have a community conversation about, you know, what's important and what's valuable. As far as the school hours go, um, I don't know if there's any connection, you know, in having a community conversation outside of school hours with people to educate. You know, for the people who maybe aren't reading the documentation that's attached to those emails.
So I will say that, uh, the high school staff and the high school school board are all, have read or are reading Anxious Generation. To, to start the conversation, um, I think that book is unbelievably phenomenal, it's also a heavy lift for a lot of people. So the administrators that retreat went through the Anxious Generation website to look at some of the resources that are there. Um, I think at this building, I would like to provide our board with copies of Anxious Generation, um, so I will work to make that happen. Um, I know that Kelly read the book, so, um, I think another piece for us is to, to lead that conversation here. Um, and to, and to have a really thoughtful conversation, I did discuss it at the P T A meeting last week, so that the P T A was aware that it was something coming up. Um, I am not aware of the petition, I, I know that the administrators have been wondering, should, you know, is that where we should be going? So I think that. They are doing work around it, it's just too soon, so, so the piece on my end is superintendent, right? Every, all these bans are coming and, and there's no more, you know, cut them off, well, what's the research after that, is it really working? It's too soon to tell, I never like to be the first one on the bandwagon, you know what I mean?
Sure.
Let's wait, let's see how everybody else does, and then, and then go from there.
Sure, yeah.
Rather than tweak things and shift, and you have to build some capacity in your community, you know, you have to educate first, right? What's the why behind changing something, why are you changing it, you know, and, and if, if folks don't understand the why. Implementing a new policy is just gonna blow up in your face.
Yeah.
So I think it's important, it's all coming at, right, it was in the scrape, we see it on the news, you know, governor banning cellphones, doing this, is it the social media, is it the phone? Don't have a flip, only have a flip phone till you're in eighth grade, have these parent contracts, I mean, it's, it's just swirling, I'm sure you've all seen it on that.
It's exhausting.
It's exhausting, and the data behind it, you know, girls are much more at risk to self-harm than boys at this point, after the smartphone was invented. And boys have their whole, a whole other trajectory on learning issues and mental health issues because of social media.
It's correlation, right?
Yeah, so it's a lot, it's one, so I should say, what?
It's not causal.
How is it disrupting kids, how's it disrupting this specific school?
It could be anything, so many things.
And is it distracting kids, so let's not, let's look at our group first and then see what we need to do. Instead of just jumping on the, you know what I mean?
I just, I wanted to bring up the petition because it's, it's got to the point now where there is a network of people who are advocating to limit the use in our school district. And our S A U, not just Plymouth, that it might be worthwhile finding out what's going on and, and trying to connect those dots so we're not sort of working against each other.
Yeah.
Uh, because it's a larger conversation than just here, I think.
And, and that's a conversation too that I can have with the chair of the school board at the high school, to see if it's something that has been brought up.
Yeah, and I haven't, I'm, I'm going to my first school board meeting for the high school, so I have no idea what their conversations are either.
Right.
Right, and I, and I can update any of you, cause I have both of these.
Yeah.
I mean, I know what's going on in general, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's definitely worth a.
But they're talking about it too.
Yeah. Yep, all the schools are.
So that's. Yeah, it's, and you just never know anything, but, um, I just wanted to mention that, the other thing, um, was safety. So I had at my work a epic shooter training with Officer Dinan recently, um, and I, he was talking about lockdown. Policy in schools, and it's varied a little bit than what we've heard in years past. And, and so I just wondered if there was gonna be that parent night with the P D, we did that years ago. So that parents can understand what exactly our kids are hearing when they do their lockdown drills in the classroom. Um, it was just different enough that I was concerned that there was some confusion. Um, so I thought that might still just be something to consider, especially to new parents that are here that have not done it before, it was really valuable.
Right.
And then I saw a little gadget, it's like maybe three inches tall by an inch and a half wide, it's metal, it bolts to the door. And this gentleman was doing, I don't know if it came up, it was on TV somewhere, but, um, when the lockdown stalled. The teacher just went and put a bolt in that slot and the door will not open. It was the easiest, quickest thing, it looked like it wasn't a lot of money for investment. Um, I don't know if you guys have looked at those or have heard of them before, but it seemed a lot easier than the metal piece that Officer Dinan showed us that you can kinda, kinda tie around the doors. It was so much easier and quicker than that, so I just wanted to mention.
I haven't seen those, but I've seen some other sort of similar things.
Yeah.
So we can definitely have a conversation.
Also, if I can finally can just share it, it was, it was expensive too.
Share it with both of us, yeah. Yeah.
For such a big safety feature, it seemed like very little, um, cost, so. But yeah, the parent night, I would love to see that happen again, this will.
We, we'll, we will work on that.
Thank you. Alright, did everyone that is here sign that, um, yeah, perfect, thank you, and we had no correspondence, correct?
Yep.
No correspondence.
Okay, so we just need a motion to go into non-public?
Um, I just want to ask one more question before we do, um, our next meeting looks like it's scheduled for on the calendar, I thought it was for Labor Day?
Oh, yeah, sure, that's course, yeah.
No, it's on the night.
It's on the ninth.
Yeah.
The ninth, okay, so it's the following Monday.
Yes.
I probably looked early, so it's the week after, that's what I figured.
That's what we typically do, because it is.
I figured that, I just thought I saw it on the calendar, it was Labor Day.
It's, I, rather than making it the Tuesday, I'd much prefer the following Monday, it gives us a little bit more time to get up and running here and I can bring.
Great.
Yeah. You saw it on the school calendar?
Oh, yeah, I thought I did.
Okay, so Jenny Lee, can we check that, that'll be amazing.
Sorry if I'm wrong, but.
So are you proposing that it's not on the night?
It is on the night, it is on the night.
It is on the ninth.
No, it is, I just moved it.
Yeah. Okay, super, thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks Jenny.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, so, um, motion to go into non-public?
So I would like to propose that we do the tour while some cleaning up happens with the video camera, and then that we come back for non-public.
Okay, for sure.
And then I just have some nominations.
Okay, and then, but we need to go into, no, not, non-public yet, so that way if parents wanna come see our tour, they can.
You can just recess a little while.
Okay, we're gonna time out, time out, a time out, so we can get a tour of the nice new building?
We'll let the camera man finish up, turn it off, clean up now.
Yeah.